Okay.
Call to order, roll call.
Okay. Call to order, you have to move to do that. If you got it, there we go. Okay, roll call. Ray?
Yeah.
Bill?
Here.
Bart is here, Fran?
Here.
Alexandra?
Here.
Christie?
Here.
Eric? Okay, no Eric. All right. And I don't need to call you guys, right? Okay.
Adoption of agenda.
Oh, there it is, pledge allegiance. It's right here.
Well, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the public. One nation, under God. Indivisible, liberatory, and just for all.
Okay. Let's play ball. All right.
So adoptive of agenda. I haven't even seen the agenda.
That's what we, that's okay.
I assume someone has looked at it.
Yes, yes, I move, we adopt the agenda.
We have a second. Moved in second to adopt agenda as. Submitted all reason favor to the on.
Hi.
Okay. Public forum. I guess I could read this, any member of the public may address the irrigation committee. On any matter within the jurisdictional authority of the irrigation committee, public members desiring to provide comments. Must be recognized by the committee chairman and speak from the podium, comments must be directed. Only to the irrigation committee. Public should address irrigation committee members during the public meeting as chairman, vice chair, secretary or member. Followed by the committee members individual last name, the irrigation committee will hear. Communications on matters not on the agenda, but no action will be taken. No disruptive conduct shall be permitted in any irrigation committee meeting, persistence and disruptive conduct. Shall be grounds for summary termination by the chairman of that person's privilege of address. Hi.
Can I speak?
Please.
I'm three part item.
Yeah, I've always been on the phone.
Ah, okay.
Oh, yes, yeah, welcome.
The image.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I was oh, seven, three, three. Okay. I would like to bring to the attention of the irrigation committee that the 2023 irrigation season total is seventeen point five. Minors inches less than the 2022 season. When the 2018 rate study was completed, the rate study consultant stated repeatedly. That treated water customer cannot subsidize the service of the irrigation customer. And then I have a chart. I was intending on printing a copy out for you, but my computer blitzed on me. But then if you want to round down, these are the numbers, twenty twenty-three, six hundred and thirty-two inches were sold. Twenty seventeen, which was right before the. What you might call it, the rate study.
Two eighty.
Yeah. And it's six, the in two thousand seventeen, six hundred and seven point five. Two thousand eighteen, five hundred and sixty-two point five. So we lost about fifty-six.
Five hundred and thirty.
Five, six, two point five. Twenty twenty, where am I at, twenty twenty?
Nineteen.
Five oh nine point four. Twenty twenty-one, five sixteen. Twenty twenty-two, five eighteen point five, and twenty twenty-three, five oh one. So we lost like seventeen and a half additional, so this is way over a hundred and something inches. And I, a hundred and sixteen point five. It comes out to about forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand dollars a year. So since the district is planning to do another rate studies soon, you will probably see that the current rates will have to be raised because of the loss of the above revenue. And the board approved the twenty twenty-three irrigation season. Last week on April eleven, twenty twenty-three, and I would like to ask why. Today's packet did not include the staff report. And I'm submitting these are written comments. And I'd like to make part of the minutes, thank you.
I'm unclear.
Okay, yeah.
Then what else understand what's going on?
Well, I didn't, I use, well, I, I understand what you're saying, but what you handed me, I lost.
Receive it.
Okay, got it.
It's not only agenda, you can't discuss, so you only receive it.
Okay.
But you might want to ask if there's anybody on Zoom public that wants to make a comment as well. Okay. Anyone on Zoom? Ray, Ray Paul. Ray Paul, you need to.
Unmute.
There we go.
All right, my, my understanding of what I've just heard is that you're looking at raising the irrigation rates because you're. Losing dollars because you're losing customers, is that what I understood?
It's a potential. No.
Potential, okay, so. When we went through the rate height meetings a year ago, two years ago, whatever it was. It was brought up, you know, it's like selling cars, if you don't have cars to sell, but it didn't seem like the district was willing to allow. More people to use the irrigation water, therefore you can't increase the revenue. Then last week they came out and you said that. You're going to postpone the irrigation season. Postpone the start, but extend it on the end. And then I, my understanding is that the water level. At the dam is already. You already have an outflow, so. Why don't you start the irrigation season at the regular time and extend that month, that's going to give you some more revenue, another. Thirty days of revenue, I don't understand why we're not starting. On the time that we need to start when you have the water.
Like a good question. I don't know how to change it.
No comment.
No comment, wait a minute, you're the board, you have to have a comment.
Yep.
Let me explain to you, you can't have a discussion on anything that is not on the agenda. The po, the purpose of the, the public. Making comments is you can make comments. And basically they can just receive it and then maybe it'll lead to being an agenda item. But you can't have discussion on things that aren't on the agenda.
Were you talking about revenue, you were just talking about revenue, and I'm giving you a, an option of how to make more revenue, so how is that not on the agenda?
But we, we learned, they, they weren't discussing that, it was a member of the public that, that brought that up in the public forum. Section, so she just, she just made her comments and everything, and the committee can't, and, and, and the board also. Cannot, you know, have a discussion on it because it's not on the agenda.
Also, according to our ordinances, we are only allowed to service the irrigation water for a limited amount of time. We can't. The, the scheduling, but we are not allowed to extend the scheduling due to. California, that's just how all. Of our, the way our system is set up. We can take it under advisement that we would have to adjust the ordinance, but at that point, then that would have to be at a later.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, but I remember in years past, I can't remember how many years ago, but the irrigation season was extended and it started at the regular time.
So just turn into a discussion.
I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of the agenda, I, I'm, so I, I don't know exactly what we're. Okay, well, I'll just listen in, then maybe at some point there'll be something that'll. Match up to what I'm, what I'm asking as to why we can't start the season on a regular time since we have the water. And to get you additional income that you need.
Request something to go on the agenda? And they like request, can you talk about this? Okay.
It's working.
Okay. Okay, so.
Yeah, and you guys, when you guys. On the agenda where it says things you guys want on the agenda, you can bring that up again.
Okay, yeah. Yes.
That's when you can bring in.
Yes, perfect. All right.
Okay.
Okay, approval of minutes?
I assume. Our. Approval of the minutes from our last meeting and. That includes all the.
Yeah.
Last pages of them, last two meetings.
Yeah, two, two months of meeting, or meeting that. We approve one until the other.
They all look great. So I move, we approve the minutes from two meetings ago?
Okay.
Anybody?
February sixteenth. Seven and March sixteenth.
Okay, so. I guess the question is, or, yeah, or. The minutes of what we. Did are on our last meeting, or we. If you comments on that. How are we handling, I'm losing track of. Where we are already.
But we want to approve the minutes from both these meetings.
Okay.
So the February sixteenth meeting.
Right.
Well, I'll take them one at a time.
February and March.
February sixteenth and March sixteenth.
So that, that's what's under. Discussion, would you like to comment on that?
Okay.
Please.
On item six eight. Because I made a comment about it not being available. And it said Adam Brown handed out a, a report and then in parentheses, attachment one. But the attachment is not included in the minute. Oh, oh, we talked about the, on the February sixteenth on item six. What a report. And I still have the, it's not on the website. So I've never seen it. So it was supposed to be included in the. Minute.
Yep.
February sixteen, sixteen.
Oh, yeah. So those attached attachments weren't included?
Yeah, when you had say, see attached or attachment.
Oh, okay.
You're approving those minutes and like when I do my public comment, there are.
Yeah, yeah, right. So can we get? Is it too late to go get that and attach it to it so we can approve it?
And then to approve it would be attachment to the.
Okay, yeah, let's do that, everybody, okay, so I move, we. We accept the. February sixteenth minutes and add the missing. Water resources handout. Second, okay. Want to say, I'll approve.
Okay. Already getting.
You want me to help you?
Totally mixed up. So I thinking this is really.
Yeah.
Probably the minutes February sixteenth and March sixteen, so.
Yeah.
The. Motion is to include. Pardon me?
Oh, the screen just went black on us and came back up.
Oh. So it's to include.
Yeah, okay, the. Water resource. Attachment that was not a, attachment one that was not included.
Okay.
But will be included while approved.
With, with, with that. Other, other than that, the, the, does anyone have any other comments on? March, February sixteenth and March sixteenth minutes? Hearing none. We have an, an approval with the. Addition of the.
Attachment one.
Attachment one.
You have a motion.
Ah, yes, I moved that we approve, I did, just said the February sixteenth. And it's been seconded.
Okay. All those in favor of adopting February sixteenth and March sixteenth minutes with the inclusion of the. Attachment one?
I.
I.
I. Nope.
Hearing none.
Alrighty.
Moving along here, irrigation committee, member comments and reports. Right here for a second, you might want to ask Ray Paul if he still has a question or he puts his hand down.
Right, yes.
Well, he knew how to put it up. Ray Paul? Did you hear the comment?
I don't think you there.
Uh, your, uh, what's on our screen indicates that you're, you want. You would like to speak, is that correct or not?
You have a hand up. Need to lower your hand.
Oh, he needs to go unmute too. If he's talking to you. Can you lower?
You, okay.
You keep muting, you keep muting me on your end and I can't unmute it, so can you hear me now?
Yeah, I, we can hear you. Did, did you? Were you hoping to speak because you have an indication that you would like to speak? By your name.
I, I, I understand all that, I did not put my hand up, so I'm trying to get it to go down, so we'll work on that.
Okay. Good luck with that.
Thank you. It's kind of like having AT&amp;T take your email away.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand, unfortunately.
Don't get him started.
So irrigation committee member comments and reports, hearing none. Informational reports, water resources statistics. Is that your? We, I mean, yeah, we can quickly go over it, I think, two pages show. His operations report from. The last four main and water resources report from last week as well as the first page, there was a. Sort of a level of stuff being how it's still at capacity, it shows our treatment production of the last night. It shows our. Gross water use, so it's really more related treated on water, but I think this here just shows that. Reservoirs still fall, related irrigation water. Second thing in the. Okay, so the second page just shows a three-month outlook on precipitation and temperature. And this is kind of something Noah does, they do thirty days, sixty days, ninety days. Um, so this shows we have equal chances to have a average next three months on temperature wise and precipitation wise, so. Being probably expected to start heating up here.
Tomorrow.
Other than that, yeah, pretty straightforward. For March. For this meeting. Okay, thank you, Adam.
Yes.
Action items review, proposed ordinance changes. So, last meeting, we had a few comments from previous discussions, I think. Within the packet is the purple. Writing, so that includes. Section J. Section N. And then section P on the P. You are, as I was just a number, a letter and change. But other than that, all the comments remain the same from previous versions of the. The ordinance and discussions that you always had. I guess if there's any. Any comments on that, I guess that.
I have a comment. Knowledge, Christian.
Oh, I'm sorry, Christie, go ahead.
That's okay, I have three comments and I'll just throw them out. The first one is, I just noticed that there seems to be a usage of ditch and canal, and I don't know if those are interchangeable, or if they mean two different things. The definitions appendix. Appears to be missing, there's no words there. And definition is misspelled. And my last item is my, my section that I keep harping on, section one D. I would like to request adding the word service after water in the last sentence. Thank you.
One, one B as service.
One D, one B, yeah.
One B is in boy?
Yeah.
Dog.
To a lack of water service, because that's what was explained to me that it was intended to be.
Oh, so it is. Both sentences end in.
No, the second sentence, the one that was added, this would include. Loss of plant material or other lots related to a lack of water service.
Okay, we'll make that comment, edit.
Thank you.
Yes, we do not have the definitions. Completed, we can do those definitions. We do not get them.
And the manager goes through it and bring more.
Yeah.
I didn't see anything more to bring, it seems really complete to me.
That's my third question was ditch and canal, do those mean the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay, because it's one, each word is used in different places. I just wondering if there should be. Consistency or if it makes any difference at all.
I do to put that in definitions.
We can do that, definitions, yeah.
Might be easier than going through and changing everything, but.
That works.
Something that, do we have a list of definitions that you'd like to have included so that we can make sure that we get them all included correctly?
I sent them to you once upon a time before.
Yes, we do, we do have those ones.
Okay, great.
And if there was any additions. Like Don was talking about.
Yeah.
Okay. Please.
If you go into. One thing that came up at the last board meeting, the discussion of. The, the selling of water that we still have available, like if somebody has not. Decided to have four inches and they adopted to do, there was nothing in this ordinance. That discusses how, when. We can put that water back into the, the system and ask people for. Do they want? To buy this water, because as a way it states on all the documentation, it's you're getting what you want. And it doesn't say. Anywhere that if you want more water, or if you, you know, it can only give you that to drop back, not drop. And since we have like, I think in our neighborhood, we have like five inches available. Is there any way we can have something in ordinance that actually incorporates that information? Of how that goes about to happen? Where we can sell. Sell this water instead of just having our number go down for use it, or inches used. We could actually be selling it, you know, like what. Three was talking about where the numbers are going down, well, we have nothing, no mechanism to throw back out to the public. Oh, by the way, we have. Five inches in cherry acres, we have ten inches over in Pilot Hill. And if we instructed, we have this much time to get, and get a form to us and whatever, you know. And sell this water. That's where it takes your, your company.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I think we can definitely add some language to the end, and then we're also working on our end to determine how to reach out to all the different customers. As well, so that's definitely something we can add as a language point to the, to the ordinance.
It would have to be a really short time frame though, this, the mechanics that work you have, you have the board approves those.
Well, I understand, but we have to have something and we don't have anything.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, you guys have emails of all the customers or?
No.
Yeah, we are contacting.
Typically do, yes. Yes, we send out.
Fast.
Yeah.
But you don't have every customer's email.
Not every customer, we have, we have most irrigation customers emails because on the form it has their email address, most irrigation.
Hey, the other thing you might do where you have water available is. Send out an email stating there's extra water, if somebody wants to purchase it.
So we could, you know, I think, I think we'd be, yeah, we could, I was, I know we'll talk about it later in the agenda too, about this media outreach, but I think it could be like we had to have a summary on our website of the previous years, people could see, you know, hey, these different areas have water, because they could plan six months ago.
Yeah, yeah, that's really good.
Yeah.
We start planning for next year.
Yeah.
Or the four.
Yeah.
You know.
And file it, get it on.
Do you want, yeah. Do you want three inches and say have two inches?
Well, I think it, it does allow for that before.
Yeah.
Lot for change.
That you can change up, you can ask for an additional, additional minor inch.
Okay, let me rephrase this. Someone who doesn't know or pay attention to that, to bring it. Forward as information. So that everybody knows they can. Ask for more.
Mm-hmm, there's water available.
Yeah.
So I think that, yeah, I think maybe on the application, it's like there's a link to the website that shows last year, because if you get on each. Because if you do each application per section of ditch, it would get really time consuming to have that, but you have like, hey, a link on the bottom for previous. You know, we have that website updated, it shows, you know, what was you last year in different section, they can look, yeah, in this section, this might want me to apply and ask for more.
Are you doing it for the courtesy to the customers? For the convenience of the, of the, of GPO?
Um, I think, I think both ways, you know, I mean, it's, it's both, I mean, because it already takes a lot of staff time just to get those applications out. And if you're, and there are so many different sections, route services within there. I mean, we could look at a form and we could try to automate it, so I'm just trying to think.
Or a public outreach at the front of it to explain this information.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's always been my, my comment is trying to. We don't have the educational material that goes out to the irrigation customers, if you know everything, you know about irrigation.
Yeah.
You wouldn't. We wouldn't have a lot of our, our. Problems. But when you get irrigation, I forget that form, and you have to be able to, as a customer, know what the heck you're talking about, so that means, did you come from an area that knows? Where irrigate, that had irrigation in the town you were in before?
So, yeah, we used to like cover letter, yeah, we used to do cover letter with application, that was figured out.
Christie and I have questions, we have our hands raised.
I think something else that can be done. To help with this is to reopen the waiting list and to start building a waiting list right now. So that we can actually put this information out and we can determine where all those different people are looking to add minors inches to their service. If they are, and that way we can come back next year and we can include them into the, the proposal, so that it's not so, so onerous. One way or the other on the customer or on the, the district, because we will be able to have an understanding of where all these different added services are.
Okay.
Christie.
Um, what I've been hearing is talking about the customers and adding inches, is there a mechanism that sends out to the public in general? Who may or may not have a treated water account, such as those people on wells, that there's additional inches available?
Not quite.
So, so later in the meeting, we're going to discuss some of the ways to do outreach for the irrigation committee. And so that's where we're trying to get some input from the committee as to what kind of topics, and, and so that is a topic that we would be able to include. As part of that media outreach.
So right now there is nothing in place, is that what I'm hearing?
That is, well, there are ways of reaching out, but nothing that is like. A wide spread outreach.
A procedure, okay, thank you.
Please.
We actually post this on, if you have, do you have an irrigation site on the?
We do, and he's.
Something like that needs to be put up as soon, because that lists all the available. Right there. So this is done after they get finished, you know, processing all the application.
Yeah, it needs to be, needs to be having more information.
Yeah, and also the Christie's question with.
Yeah. And also the Christie's question with the canal versus ditch. Ditch is the old word and I think, what do you call them now? Nails?
Um, well. Kind of call that the upper part of it.
No, I mean, the actual.
Well, that's what I'm saying. The, we actually call canals, which is larger. Ditches down here, we typically call it. So it's kind of like a something for our.
But in here, in the ordinance, there's no way to keep them.
Yeah.
Consistent like that. Okay.
Mr. Paul, do you still have, your hand is.
Yes, yes, I do. My hand is down. So I'm trying to understand, I heard the word waiting list. Is the waiting list generated from existing customers that want additional water? Or is it, uh, property owners that want irrigation water and do not have it at this time?
So as it stands right now, we do not have a waiting list, but what I'm proposing is we re-institute the waiting list as it has been in the past. Currently, there's nobody on the waiting list because everybody who was has been given their inches that they're looking for. Moving forward, it would be the answer to your question, sir, is both. It would be for existing customers who want to increase the amount of inches they had, but also adding new customers who don't have existing service today.
So is there, so it doesn't sound like we are actively promoting and looking for new irrigation customers. We're trying to get the customers that we have to pay more money for the water. I don't understand why we can't do a mailing to all of your customers and say, hey, we have irrigation accounts available for you. Are you interested? That, I mean.
That's precisely, that's precisely what we're proposing to do, sir.
And we've never, we've never done, I've only been up here since nineteen seventy-six. So I just find it hard to believe, and I'm not being combative here, I'm just asking questions. I find work on public utility district could never in forty years promote additional customers for the irrigation system, but keep wanting to raise the rates. I mean, I, that's my soapbox, I guess, for today. So that'll be another discussion, but thank you for listening.
I just want to add two sets here too. I think it's, it's irrigation service is pretty limited, like a lot of the customers that have easy access to it have it. But when you, once you get a few parcels away from the, the, the trick canal the pipeline, it's really difficult for a customer to pay that cost to get, not, not the connection cost, just, uh, the mechanics of easements, pipeline, it's like, it may is a challenge for, even if you're close to it. Or if you have to pump, you're on the wrong side, Red Hill. Because we have them all the time. I get requests all the time. People want it, but what it comes down to, it's not really our cost to connect it. It's their cost on their side and the mechanics of it. So, I mean, there's challenges everywhere, but still public outreach is still good, obviously.
What you're going to do is offer it.
Yeah.
You know.
So I guess, is there any other, uh, ordinance moving?
Yeah, I, um, anything else on the ordinance? Hearing none. Go to, uh, seven B, review customer letters and applications. Possible action, potential amendments or formatting changes to customer letters or applications.
I think on this one, we're just looking to table this one as the last time I understand. I don't think we're still ready to adjust the letters, but you can, uh, provide comments to the different letters, the different applications that we have. So, so if that's something the committee would like to do, other than that, I'd like to bring this back at the next meeting after we have a little bit more time to look at this. Unfortunately, we've been getting the, uh, services started, so the letters and applications haven't, haven't had the priority that it needs to have yet.
Okay, so we're going to table that? Okay.
So seven B, table that. Bring back our next meeting, uh, seven C, identify needed media content for development.
Okay, so this is a good, uh, start to the topic. We've had a good discussion throughout the beginning of the meeting about more information that's needed from the district or to the customers. And our new executive assistant, Elizabeth Olson, um, has started a, uh, YouTube channel as well as uh, some other social media platform methodologies to get some information out to the customers. Now, I'm not only promoting those type of technologies. We are also exploring mailers and brochures and things that can go out to the various customers. What we're going to utilize the video platform for is a basic how to on how to operate your irrigation, uh, service. So where to clean, how to, uh, what do's and don'ts. Uh, what to do if you have, uh, X happen. So we're trying to put together some thirty second to two minute uh, video clips or even longer if the topic requires to start to educate the customers who may have questions about irrigation service. So also through this process, we'd like to include a way for people to, uh, express interest in coming on to our irrigation service as well. Now, um, what I was hoping for is from the committee or even from the public is what type of topics do you think specifically you'd like to have the district put together a little informational video to help everyone understand and then, and then how we can facilitate those by utilizing the staff and maybe a homeowner or somebody else who wouldn't mind being on the video. So I think I'd just like to turn it over to see if anybody has any, uh, topic suggestions that we could take notes on.
Anybody have, um, suggestions to add to this identify needed media content for development? Yes.
I think it would be beneficial to have a camera go from the street through the connection and then out to where the water, the, either the irrigation water or the treated water goes and, uh, describe where it turns over to the homeowner's responsibility. This is how the valve is set up. If you need to turn it off because of emergency, this is where you do it. If the brakes this side of the valve, it is the property owner's responsibility. If it's this side of the valve, it is the utilities district.
So are you referring to irrigation as opposed to treated water? Because if you have the same issue.
Uh, then we could have two separate videos. Okay, so it's real clear to everybody where, where it changes from the utility.
Responsibility where the.
Uh-huh. And then if you want to refer back to it.
Okay. Christie, do you have, please?
Yeah, um, on, on the ditch water, it might be one, just a general, what is a ditch? You know, for people that move up here, what is the ditch? What is it used for? And maybe a map of the service areas showing the lines, just real general information about the system.
Yeah, I think that's a great, uh, suggestion. One of the things I'd like to do is we're, we're looking to incorporate a drone into some of our operational measures. And I'd like to take a drone basically starting from Stumpy and then going down and doing a little narration on what we have available at the district and more of a, hey, here's a, a, a what's what at the district. So they can, people can kind of experience the, the parts of the district they don't necessarily always get to see.
Second question. Go ahead. Well, just in line with what was being said before about, um, public outreach, uh, it may possibly not a video, but just how do I get access to an irrigation ditch? How do I open an account? That sort of a how to.
We have, I think, yeah, there's a good, I guess, like a frequently asked questions. We do have a bunch.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
On our website now, but they're not for irrigation.
F I Qs?
Kind of like a funeral, you know, where they.
Yeah.
Click on it. And this is how I get this. This is how I get that. It's what I need to do.
And then part of that would be also like when you're going with the drone and like we were talking about what you have near those ditches and what you don't. And also that these holding ponds or these, um, I don't know the right term for that. I'm, you know, where the water comes in and it has the rise and fall that these, this is not for your personal use of swimming, bits on, you know, whatever. Uh, this is part of our water system and you're not supposed to be using them for, because that was part of the ordinance that we went over. Um, because I know I've heard in meetings that, uh, you know, people are, that's what they're using them for. And so if we, as you're droning, as the, this is the overview, but these are the things not to do with the another one, I think you don't want to see happen to the ditch or those ponds.
Yeah.
Um, we do have that problem.
Yes.
Uh, Brad's idea is good, but are connections consistent on all? I, I think there's different connection.
Probably has over the years.
So are you addressing in verbiage?
It's up and down, you know.
Yeah, that's right.
It's gonna be different.
Which decade?
Anything doesn't know where you shut the water off.
Yeah, yeah.
If you have a problem with your line, they should know how to do that.
For a diagram, it's a, the turn off. I mean, people need basics, though.
Okay, um, have we beat that to death?
I got one more beating.
Please.
Um, that when, when you guys are doing the cleaning, we brought this up before, is the notifications to the irrigation customers, like if you're going to be out tomorrow to flush lines in Pilot Hill that everybody gets an email saying there will be line flushing, so please make sure your valve is open.
Mm-hmm.
To allow that lead to go through and not plug up your
Yeah.
your, your irrigation.
Yep. Notification, yeah, just.
Yeah.
Okay. We've gone through this enough. Um, we're now far as I can tell at number eight agenda items for next irrigation committee meeting. Please.
I'd like to, uh, have the topic that Sherry brought up on, um,
I don't say a lot of, uh.
Yeah, in the water.
It should be a combination of what she said, the ordinance change that will be added.
Yes.
And a public outreach that should happen.
And could we have it in the agenda with the details that we're going to need? So we don't have postponed it another month?
Whose responsibility would this be?
Well, we can just put it up.
It's staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, staff.
Because we, we don't have the information.
So the request is to have, are we going about the ordinance or additional sales?
Additional sales.
So you want something that you can definitively recommend?
Um.
Well, you're going to have a change, you're at there was going to change to the ordinance, the addition of that information.
I'm requesting an evaluation that this committee will be discussing next meeting. And to do so, we're going to need staff to prepare, um, some documentation.
Historical data.
Yeah, historical, yeah.
Yeah. Just use his staff report from the board. It's all there.
It's all there?
Yeah. I mean, that's the whole seat and it's got all the everything.
So, so when, so also could we get the number of people that gave up irrigation water in the last couple of years?
Well, you got them by the.
You got them by the mouse.
Except I had to go down to five years of those to get.
They need to provide one. It wasn't, no one provided at the last meeting we were here.
Really here, but I did the staff one, I can't recall.
No, it's just.
Yeah.
There was.
Yeah, so I thought, we saw it at the last meeting.
Okay, I'll go back.
Well, we could take it forward and bring it to the next meeting.
Fine.
So it's right in front of everybody, yeah, sitting in the packet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll include all that. Plus the ordinance change that we'll see some sort of a time limit on adding inches after approval by the board.
So, uh, we're drawing towards the end. I, I see Ray Paul, you still have your hand up?
I just put it up. So you're asking for comments for the next meeting. I would like to have a discussion at the next meeting. Or at least to have admin look at the possibility of starting the irrigation season this year on May one, like we normally do and keep that extended month. You got a lot of agriculture people that not getting that water on May one is going to greatly affect uh, their crops. But again, it's also going to increase your income. So I, I'm having a hard time understanding why that, that can't be done. So, and we can't discuss it today. So a, and I would like, I, I don't understand. All the people that are complaining on Facebook about the irrigation starting later, none of them are showing up for this meeting. So shame on them, but that's the way it is. So.
So we want to put on the agenda discussing not just extending the season, but elongating the season.
Starting it, starting it on May one and adding that month on the end because of fire danger.
Make it six months instead of five months.
There you go.
Yeah.
Now, you know, the following year may be something different. We just happened to be, you know, it extended, if you remember the meetings before we were looking to try and extend it at the end of the year because of fire danger and the heat we had and the shortage of water.
I would like to request from staff if there are any, um, legal issues that would, uh, preempt us being able to do that.
So unfortunately, the state of California limits us. Once we declare something, we cannot change it. We can look at it. However, this is a very aberrational year that we received water this year, so um, it is the most water the state of California has received in like its history. So I don't foresee this happening every year. We could definitely explore the, the increased, uh, irrigation season. Um, but just to address the comment, um, there was a lot of the agricultural, uh, operations requested a later season because they had enough water in their system to have their crops in the beginning and they would like the water at the end instead. So that's the reason for the adjustment.
Okay.
And, and note that if something happens in October where we get a, a deluge of water uh, or a high volume of precipitation, um, that we can cut it short.
Yeah.
The board can make a recommendation. The board can make a decision to
Right.
cut it.
Yeah.
So we're not.
Well, exactly.
This discussion was also just FYI, uh, this discussion was held at the last iteration meeting for considerable amount of time. And so I it wasn't like it was arbitrarily done, but the, when to start the meeting and when to end the, or when to start the season, when to end the season was a topic of discussion for some time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's not like it just happened. It's been under discussion for a period of time.
I never said it was. And I apologize for not being able to.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm informing you mainly, so. Is there anything else?
Yeah.
Oh, Chris Campbell.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I guess I would just recommend that you have a standing action item regarding the irrigation season update such that, you know, if there is public comment that it can be openly discussed at that time. So if there's a standing action item, because we're in the middle of the, you know, the start of the irrigation season, right? Um, that you should have a, a standing action item. So we, um, you know, folks like ourselves can have an open forum to discuss as well. discuss as well as receive feedback. So there's a two-way street instead of us just providing public comment and it potentially not going anywhere. So that's, that's one comment. The other, the other, and I guess just building off of Ray's comment regarding the irrigation season, you know, there was not a lot of inform, actual irrigation scheduling information provided at the last meeting. No, I was not in attendance. I did review the, um, uh, meeting recording. And I just, you know, recently looked at the meeting notes. There was not a lot of information provided regarding sort of you know, sort of logical justification for, uh, extending, you know, shifting the season to a, from a May first start to a June first start. So I think, you know, I think next time it would be move the board to actually provide, um, you know, additional evidence, uh, to support such, such, uh, such a claim to, to want to, uh, reschedule the, the irrigation start. And that has to do with, you know, your customer base, right? So, you know, there's some personal opinions about what the, what the, um, season start should be. But it wasn't, there was no sort of justification of information provided.
Please, I, I'd like to comment on that. First of all, this, the group that's here now is the irrigation committee, they're not the board. They can't make the action and, and make the decision. What their purpose is, is to make a recommendation to the board. The board is the one that actually takes the actions. So at a board meeting would be where you would want to, uh, be too many comments about any shift in, in the schedule, because that's where the decision is made. The irrigation committee just, you know, gets, gets kind of you know, like you could give your opinion and what you think and they can, you know, raise that up at the board, but it's the actual board that sets when the season is gonna start and end.
So to, to sort of clarify, so
Can I finish this off with?
Please.
Where's multiple documentation that was presented to the board in the February, March and April meeting, especially in the April meeting uh, showing the projection, um, and all the information on whether or not we could push it into October or not. So all that information has been available over multiple months. Same way with this committee, this committee has been discussing this since actually October of last year. When we were, when they met. And so these topics have been beat up pretty good. Um, and we haven't had about one or two people of the public show up. So, you know, we're doing, maybe we're trying to all, we are all, you know, that's to try to do the best thing for the customer and the environment and our community. And so, you know, we would really, uh, want to embrace any communication that the, the public wants to give the, um, the committee or the board.
You know, I, 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 I understand that. And so, yeah, and thanks, and thanks for the, the previous speaker clarifying, yes, that the, you know, the committee makes the recommendation to the board, the board then acts, makes the decision to act on it, right? And so um, you know, informate, you know, in terms of the, the, I'm assuming during the last committee meeting, you know, sort of, you know, irrigation scheduling information wasn't, you know, sort of at a, I know you can't do it at an individual landowner level, but that type of information I don't think was probably adequately considered in terms of the motion to for, for June first start. So I'm just making a recommendation for future years that you might want to consider thinking about the broader customer base and in, in terms of when making those recommendations and it's justified with actual numbers.
Well, it would also be helpful, like I, I believe you said yourself, is that if, if this is such a hot topic with people, they need to come to the meetings. You know, the, the district has gone, in my opinion, way above and beyond to make people aware of these irrigation committee meetings. And this irrigation committee was formed because a lot of people wanted to have to do this. And so that's why the whole thing was formed. And yet we don't get people here. We are not going to make any kind of decision or, or rely on or, or any of that on Facebook. You know, people that want to make all these comments on Facebook, that's well and good, but it doesn't count on Facebook. If you want your voice heard, you need to get more involved. Come to the meetings.
No, I, I definitely would agree with that. Facebook is not the forum for, for making decisions and having a discussion.
No.
Um, and yeah, it's just unfortunate. It's just probably a challenge for many people during the, the work week to, to break away and and, uh, you know, attend, attend a meeting. I mean, I'm taking a break from work right now to do this, so.
And, and that, and that, and that's a valid point. And if enough people wanted to get that involved, I'm sure an adjustment to the the meeting schedule could be made.
Are you allowed to come? Are you allowed to come to the board meetings at the facility?
Yes. Yes.
Have you, have you read your website? It says no one is allowed in the building. If you don't work.
Yeah, the, the COVID restrictions have not been, uh, rectified on the
On the website?
On the website, oops.
But we'll, 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 we'll be getting that taken care of soon, I'm sure. I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will, we'll remove that today. I wasn't aware of that being on the website, so I will apologize on behalf of the district for that. And, and just to address Mr. Campbell, if the, if the committee members, and I don't disagree with it, want to have some sort of a standing item that is on the agenda, that you have a quick update on season and whether or not it's, it's used or not, we can leave that on there. And, um, yes, I will just kind of second what uh, Director Thorne Bro, uh, and Director Stevens said. Um, you're more than welcome to come and comment on the documentation, even if you can't make it to the meeting. You are welcome to submit a written comment that we will read into the record so that your opinion and your voice can be heard. Uh, I know the directors take those, those comments seriously. And I know that if enough people commented that they would want the irrigation season to remain May first, they would have strongly considered it. The numbers that you are, are referring to, we utilize a stream gauge system that shows how much water is in the system. And with Stumpy being full and the aberrational water year that we experienced this year, uh, we made the determination that there was enough water early that we wanted to have a later season because of the fire danger that could pose with the extra vegetation that's being grown this year. So that was some of the justification that we, we utilized as a staff to determine that this was a better idea to extend the season and move it one month into the future.
Well, yeah, I mean, I appreciate that. And I appreciate, you know, the consideration for the fire season. It was just, it would, you know, I guess to, to Ray Paul's uh, comment, if it is possible to actually have an extended season such that those, you know, uh, we can, you know, mitigate for fire at the end as well as, you know, retain our, the opportunity to, um, you know, begin on May one instead of June one, that, that would be appreciated. Especially if there's water available in the system still. It's not, not that, never, not everybody irrigates this, uh, this, the same way. Or has the same need or demand.
Yeah. Um, I, I, um, in a part of the staff report from, um, the last board meeting, we were actually, we have water at the headworks, but we don't have capacity due to, um, the siltation from the fire to even have your agency start May first due to access and work we need to get done. So and that was part of the staff report from the board meeting as well.
Oh, so, so there's a, there's a maintenance issue?
Uh, yeah, maintenance access issue, yeah. We've had such late snow in the heavy snow and access to the upper canal.
Hmm, that makes sense.
And trees falling.
Yeah. Oh, that.
Well, there's also been, correct me if I'm wrong, yeah, but there's also been a lot of work with dealing with the, uh, mosquito fire and
Yeah.
and the issues that it raised as far as, as the cow goes.
Yeah.
That's like the main, that, that's like the main issue because, because of mosquito fire, even if late snow, we, we would have been able to, but because of mosquito fire and so much runoff, so much so runoff into the canals um, and the upper reaches. That's me, it's, it's not, it's not feasible to do it by May first this year. Good thing we have a lot of water.
Yeah, yes.
Well, yeah, Adam, I appreciate that, that additional piece of information. I, I was not, I was not aware that there was maintenance issues that, that were also affecting the start of the irrigation season, so that would, that would have been, I guess, good to know last month during the, during said committee meeting.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think it was clear in the board meeting, in the irrigation meeting, because at the time of the last irrigation, I mean, we didn't have, we got even more snow.
I was gonna say, I think it snowed in between.
Between.
Yeah. It's very challenging.
Winter for everyone.
It's been fun.
It's, it is, it's impressive.
It's been fun.
And we, uh, we can only make the decisions based on what we have at that point in time.
Is there such a thing as standing action items where you could just say that?
Yeah.
Should we do that?
Yes, we can, we, we absolutely can include a standing item that um, if, if there's no item that needs to be discussed for that item, it just gets tabled and moved and continued on.
That's probably a good idea to add. Do we need to move on that?
No, there's no need, there's no need to move on that. We can add that in as staff.
Okay, let's say we, we aren't preparing the
These were all the pictures of that report I mentioned.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so if you want to see what, uh, that contractor had done, uh, as a report, these are all the photos.
Oh, yeah.
So I think you guys, did you guys help get that?
No.
No.
I did.
What, what do you?
I got a copy emailed. Chris even like a bottle with an email. Yeah, we can send everyone.
Um, okay, let's move along here. Um, so
We're gonna get these, right? We're gonna get copies of these? Yeah, okay. Will, if, will anybody open it and cat it before? Okay, then let's email it.
I remember you just wanted us something.
Can we just see, can you just email it and let's make it simple? Let's do that, honey. Let's just do that and make it simple as possible.
Christie?
Before we, you just said move on, moving on is to the next meeting and adjournment. Could I get a recap of what we'd agreed? The agenda items will be for the next meeting?
Please.
No.
Why are we taking the notes?
Me?
Yeah, right. Do you have it? You want me, did you keep track of it?
Yes, so we wanna go over historic data with the irrigation and the inches.
I can't hear.
Um, so there's gonna be a review, um, on irrigation inches and availability and use, um, and go through some historic usage there. Um, we are going to keep that standing action item, um, in terms of discussion of the season and how we, uh, relate to that. And then, um, the ordinance, are we gonna try to make next meeting a finalization of that ordinance in order to refer it to the board?
I say yes, let's try. Let's land that plane.
And we'll also, we'll also have the letters and the, uh, application.
Oh, yeah.
And then finally, we will have probably some preliminary, uh, topic, more topic discussion on the media outreach and some outreach for additional sales of the inches that are available.
Okay, that's good. Got all my list. What's on?
So that'll include the Ray Pauls that just wanted to discuss having the whole, uh, start on May first and go to the end of October, correct? That'll all be included in that other part? Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, perfect. All right then.
Hey.
Excellent.
Where are we? Someone has a list of all that stuff?
Yeah, that's good.
I don't.
The next A word.
Okay, we're on nine.
So next meeting date and adjournment, the irrigation committee set the third Thursday for regular committee meetings during the irrigation season and as needed are directed by the board. The next regular irrigation committee meeting is May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
To, correct.
Uh, I should have that.
All right, then.
Did we want to keep that at two o'clock or did somebody mention moving the times for the public?
Well, no one's asked us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any, any movement has to be done sixty days in advance, so you would have to come to be approved as a move from the irrigation committee. Then go to the board and then once the board approved that change, we would have to then wait six days to make any changes.
Okay, so we're still at two P M.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have a robo-call to all you guys to make sure you know.
And, and we're all thinking easy on him.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. With that.
Don't we have to move?
It is over.
You have to move.
Oh.
Yeah, now I can.
All in favor.
All right.
Any opposed?
A great reason, yeah.